Good evening and welcome to the Carlisle Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 14, 2019. I'm going to read through the agenda. It should be a pretty quick night, though I really shouldn't have said that.
Yeah, yeah. You jinxed it right there.
So at 7:00, we're going to start with community input. At 7:05, we will discuss residential open space, community open space parcel. At 7:15, a project update for the public safety communication system. At 8:00, review the ground lease for the solar photovoltaic array at the transfer station. At 8:30, review of the Board of Selectmen 2019 goals. I just wanted to close them out. At 9:00, town administrators' report. At 9:10, liaison reports. At 9:20, a reorganization of the board. At 9:25 minutes, and at 9:30, we will adjourn. So first, I will be welcoming Barney when she gets here, but I just want to, you know, thank Kerry Kissinger for all of his service over the last two years and, you know, welcome Barney. Barney had a prior engagement for tonight. She is going to come, but she'll be here a little bit later, which is typically this meeting, we start with the reorganization of the board, and then we immediately switch who is the chair. But it's just really important that Barney is able to participate in the reorganization of the board, so I'll be chairing this entire meeting. We'll reorganize at the end, and then I won't be chairing the next meeting.
Unless we want to.
Exactly. Unless... Oh, I hadn't thought about that possibility. Okay.
However, this not ceding your power at the beginning of the meeting makes me reconsider.
So I also want to...
Welcome, Rebecca. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
I tell you, they're not sitting together.
Hey, the town has spoken.
Yes, welcome back, Lou. Congratulations on your win. Yes.
Well, they do that.
They're smart.
They get this 24/7.
Abuse. So I also, if I can get us back on track, is that okay with you?
Well, you're going to get us behind anyway.
I also want to thank everybody who came to town meeting for participating. It was a long slog, three nights, first ever. I'm glad I was chair to be able to oversee that. I think I'm maybe the only one that also brought us to 2:00 in the morning on a Board of Selectmen meeting. But I just really want to thank everybody. It was really terrific discussion, dialogue, and we got through a whole lot of things, and I think mostly because of Wayne's excellent leadership. And so I want to thank him for bringing us through our three-night session and helping us get through all of these really, really big issues. So with that, I'm going to open it up for community input. Is anybody here for community input? I think it's the little one here. If you could just start with your name and address.
Sure. I'm Kay Hurley, 392 School Street. I'm a new citizen of the U.S. as of January this year, so I'm a beginner in the actual process of government. So I want to say that I'm enormously grateful for and respectful of the time and effort you and other boards and committees give to the town. And my job is to help you, and so my comments tonight are offered in that spirit. I was co-presenter of Article 35, the deer hunt, at town meeting. This is my introduction to town government. And I'm as much a plant lover as an animal lover, even a fungus lover, but I'm most interested in the connections and interactions in nature and how it all works. So it's a complex system, and often when you tweak a single component, you're likely to have no effect or maybe an effect that you hadn't expected. So I believe that deer management is a bigger, broader topic than hunting. The basis for the 2018 pilot hunt was understory protection. We don't have a good handle on understory health, which makes it very hard for you to know how to proceed and whether or not we made any difference. We do have some baseline assessments from land stewards, and I plan to work with cons com and the stewards to help update the status of the understory and the various factors, including deer, that play a role. So I have two requests. One is about naming. The current deer committee is charged with, like, regulating and managing the hunting of deer versus the role of deer in the bigger ecological picture. So I suggest it be called the Hunt Committee and that it have a hunt agent or a hunt manager. And the deer themselves would, could be considered as a component in the context of other aspects of the environment. And the logical place, instead of having another committee, seems to be with land stewards. Naming is important, and it conveys meaning. My second request is that you postpone your decision on town land hunting until 2020, when you would have some understory information to inform your decision. But if you decide to go ahead in 2019, that you treat it as another pilot rather than a full-scale hunt. Thank you very much for hearing my comments.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Hi, I'm Deana Fox from 252 Westford Street. And I was trying to get before the Board of Selectmen very generously signed a race amity proclamation last year. And then we were looking, but unfortunately, we didn't realize it was just for this particular day. So we wanted to see about having one signed in perpetuity, so that it would just say the 2nd June of, the 2nd Sunday in June would be Race Amity Day. We have secured from the FRS the common for a celebration this year. I didn't know if the BOS needs to sign off on that or anything.
Yeah, so it would be better if you waited until the town administrator report, because that is a part of the town administrator report, right?
Right.
Right. And I think so the request here is that it's not day, that it's...
I think the proposed proclamation is correct.
Is correct.
It's going to be the 2nd Sunday.
Okay.
Yes, it's on our agenda.
Oh, it is? I didn't hear. I didn't know.
Yeah, no, it's actually part of the town administrator report.
Okay, perfect. And that part of the report, again, is that part of the night is at what time? 9:00?
At 9:00, but very often, we take the town administrator early as filler if we're ahead of schedule.
Perfect.
Wow.
Sorry.
That's what he thinks of you. I just moved up a rung.
I had an emergency. I'm called, I'm flying out for a family health emergency tomorrow. We're having a little race amity meeting at my house shortly, so I'm going to go home and come back.
Okay.
And, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think, you don't really need, you don't really need to be here unless you want to just pick it up.
Perfect. And I also, I have letters.
Your proclamation, so I think.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you all very much, select people.
Anybody else here for public input? Okay, none. Let's move on to residential open space community.
David Freeman, Hutchins Road, and co-author, I guess, of the residential open space community bylaw and the amendment to the bylaw which has passed. And the purpose of the amendment was to have an impact on the ongoing Woodville Village development, but because the application for a special permit for that was filed prior to town meeting and that amendment, technically, it wouldn't have to, wouldn't apply to the development. But the developer, Dan Gainsborough, has generously offered to have it apply. And so he signed a document stating if he will accept the amendment, and I believe that statement has a place for the selectman to sign that as well.
For me?
Yep. For the chair to sign that. And so I'm just, if you have any questions, but otherwise, it's just to sign that, and then I would get a copy of that to the planning board, so they'd have it part of the permitting record.
And so this is a permit-related thing, not a deed-related thing? Does this go with the deed as well?
The document itself is permit-related, but the steps that accepting the bylaw amendment will result in things in the deed.
Okay.
Yes. But that what you're signing is just him accepting the amendment as part of his, as relevant to his application, applicable to his application.
Is the date on here right? February 6?
That was the date when he agreed to do, yeah. I've been, I've been working with him for months to work this all out.
I move we authorize the chair of the Board of Selectmen to sign, what is this, elect, this document on behalf of the board.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five. It's unanimous.
There it is.
Yeah, last act is chair. Maybe not. I think we should make it chair just five.
11?
Today?
Yeah.
13?
14.
How about this, the 14th? Where were you the last three days? We can't.
I guess you might as well stay at the table, David, for the next agenda.
Yeah. Give this to George, aggression to George. Actually, maybe scan it, scan it, no, maybe scan it and get it to me, too, and then I'll get it to Dan.
All right. Public Safety Communication System.
So there is a group, which is primarily public safety professionals in town, that I have been a part of for the last several years, related to getting the funding for and now overseeing the installation of all of the various elements that town meeting approved just under $3 million to do. And so you haven't really been given an update as to the status, so I wanted to do that also because there's one significant change that we want to get your okay to. So the update is that the 190-foot tower at Banda Davis is up behind the wastewater treatment plant. It is fenced around it. The antennas aren't on it yet, but it's up. The 110-foot tower at Proctor Road is up, and the antenna's on it, and it's fenced, still waiting electrical connection that Eversource has to do. The police station antennas have been up for a while, mounted on the rear of the building, and the equipment room has been expanded. And I, I don't know that there's equipment, equipment in there yet, but anyway, it's, it's set up for all the equipment. Fire station, foundation was put in. There were some issues with the compression strength or something of the concrete, and we went through a couple months of sort of checking cores and things and seeing whether it was going to be okay and talking to the building commissioner. And the tower company had an independent lab look at it, and at the end of the day, they concluded that it was probably structurally okay, but might not last as long as it would have been if it had met the, the standards. And we had a discussion last week and concluded that we didn't think it was worth it to the town for however much money discount they might have given to the town for accepting something that didn't meet the specs. We had no way of quantifying what the amount of time that it might not last as long, and also didn't fully accept the argument about the structural integrity. And so we've asked them to take out the foundation that was put in, and so they will do that within the next couple of weeks. So there'll probably be a noisy day here, or a now noisy couple of days at Town Hall, because it's 10 feet of concrete and a lot of rebar in it. So I can blast that out, all of the ledge to get to it. They've now filled it with man-made ledging, but they're going to get it out and, and then proceed with that.
They're just going to put a whole new one in?
Yes, a whole new foundation and presumably pay a lot more attention to the, to the mix this time. 871 Bedford Road is the existing tower on the Andereg property. The antennas and the new cabinet are there. I think the electrical is still to come, the connections to that. A Nurse-Nac Hill in Concord. Tim emailed me yesterday or today that there, an agreement has been signed, but we haven't put the new equipment there yet. Middlesex, there's a new tower planned there, but it's in an appeals process with a butters, and it's expected that it'll be resolved sometime this year, but we don't know for sure when. And the last item, tower-wise, was we were planning on an extension at 1022 Westford on the Sorley property, a 10-foot extension, which is the maximum that's allowed per the special permit that was granted for that. Our anticipation was that we would pay the same nominal sort of $1 a year fee that we pay for being on the Andereg Tower, which is owned by the same tower company, but we have found out through Tim's efforts that SBA, which is the tower company, purchased that tower that already had that agreement in place, so they accepted it. And we're just sort of one spot on a tower with all kinds of things on it. Whereas at Sorley, or should call it 1022 Westford, we would be the only ones on this 10-foot extension and therefore preclude them from leasing that 10-foot extension to somebody else. And so their view is they would charge us for it, and they want to charge us a lot of money. Their initial statement that they were going to charge us $15,000 a year with a 4% annual escalation, and Tim negotiated to $13,320 a year with a 3% escalation.
Negotiation, right.
Well, the, the difference between a 4% and a 3% escalation, it actually turns out to be huge. It's like that thing, if you save a penny a day, you have a gazillion dollars in a year, kind of thing.
Money we don't have, but, yeah.
Yeah. In any event, we concluded in our working group, advisory group to Tim, that it didn't make sense to lock the town into having to pay that kind of money short-term and especially long-term, because by year 10, it's $17,000 and would continue to escalate. And so somebody on the group noted that a property that we'd looked at early on, which was the town owns a tax-taking parcel about 500 feet west on Westford Street, which is an old abandoned quarry. It's a half-acre parcel, and we believe it would be a suitable site to put up a tower. And the, I think you have a sheet in your packet that sort of shows the...
The price differential.
The price differential. It's the lower right-hand corner, the numbers that matter. To not proceed with the extension at 1022 will save us approximately $85,000. A new tower, 500 feet to the west, and this is based on 150-foot tower. We may conclude that we'll do 130 or 110-foot tower, so those would be less money, but we wanted to see what the max outlay would be, would be $234,000. And so the net difference between those is $149,000, and the lease payments after 10 years would be more than that. The total up till that point would be $150,000. So we think the economic logic is, is clear to, to proceed and do this. The original contingency, the last line in the first column, was $138,000. A certain amount of the contingency's all already been used up because of ledge, mostly because of ledge found at Banda Davis and ledge found at the fire station, but there's still $43,000 in contingency. So if you apply that to the difference, it's a little over $100,000 difference. We want to proceed now because, you know, we're trying to get this thing up and running, and there's a, a need for it. And the whole system, for the most part, needs to be up and running for the thing to work, because they're all filling different gaps. In any event, we found about $105,000 worth of work that does, that we can postpone until either a special town meeting in the fall, if there's one scheduled for another reason, or next year's annual town meeting, such that with the original appropriation from town meeting, we can continue to do what we need to do and get this tower designed and built. And then at whichever town meeting it is, we would ask for, and by that time, we would have a very precise number, because any contingencies would have been, come up, and we would know what they were, and we would know the exact cost of this, because we'd know whether it was a, what size of the tower was and what the engineering costs actually were and permitting costs and all that stuff. So we just wanted sort of your assent to, to continue, and, and we would be working on it immediately. We've already scheduled a meeting onsite tomorrow morning at 10 to sort of figure out, generally speaking, where on the property to put it and where the access way would be, and so the engineer can start doing the work necessary for permitting and, and moving forward on that.
Is there a reason for going so high on that one? I mean, that's a lot taller than the current Westford Tower, isn't it?
Yes, the, the tree, basically what we did is asked Motorola, which is sort of responsible for proving out the system at the end of things. I mean, basically, they're responsible that it meet the specs within, I don't know, 98% on 90% of the coverage area or something like that. So we asked them to do coverage plots for tree heights, 110, 130, and 150. And the reason we were going higher than the 90 is the 90 was just going to be enough and wouldn't necessarily have allowed for tree growth or other issues that might arise, but we were limited to that. And so there will be, the, the three plots we have at 110, 130, and 150 show some differences in what the coverage would be for them, because you're moving further to west, there are certain areas that other terrain in the distance would have an impact on that where it was, wouldn't have. And so we're, we're just going to look at those things, and, and we'll make a decision. And, but we want to be clear, we don't want it to be any higher than it needs to be, and that's one of the things that will be looked at when the engineers...
Is it a guide tower?
No, this would be a monopole. Yes, the only lattice tower, and it won't be guide, it's just a lattice tower, the only lattice tower would be the one at the fire station. So this will be a monopole. It will be relatively close to Westford Street, but that's what we're going to be looking at tomorrow, is to how far back we can set it. There are wetlands on the property, and I was out there with Sylvia, so we will have to do a, you know, a wetlands filing. But Sylvia seemed to think that, basically, the, the idea might be to actually use the, there's sort of a quarry pit already there and to use, you know, to not have to dig down and just fill part of that, and that's where the, the tower would go. And that part of it isn't wetlands, and there's an access to that, and try to avoid the wetlands that are in the back and along one side.
Just have a couple questions about the project overall before we jump into that site.
Yeah.
One of the things that we had talked about, and we talked to County Concord about, was leasing their fiber and then, and then connecting from there over to the Andereg property, I think it was, or was it to come all the way into town?
Um, no, it, it, basically, we're, we're talking about, their fiber is just for a short run to connect to Up River Road and, and get to that part of it, and all the fiber within town would be, the town would do.
Uh-huh. And that hasn't been put in place yet?
No, that hasn't been put in place yet. And the, the contract, I think, which is the one that was contracted to do the, or cybercom, is it contract? No, contract, I think.
Contract, according to this.
Yeah. There won't be an additional charge to go the little distance further on Westford Street, but one of the things we were going to postpone doing was the Concord Fiber connection at River Road, because it's not essential. We just felt that it was a good step relative to it, but, so we would still do it, but because it's not within the contract for doing the stuff within town, we can postpone that without breaking it up and incurring cost.
Okay. My, my second question is, you mentioned that all the towers have to be up before the system can be brought up. Does that mean that the Middlesex is potentially going to hold us up? What happens if that doesn't go through?
No, Middlesex, it's, it's all the ones within town that need to be for it to work. So a Nurse-Nac Hill and Middlesex are sort of providing somewhat extra coverage, for example, for...
Travel back and forth.
Ambulances back and forth and that sort of thing. But the Nurse-Nac Hill is one of the other ones that we would postpone paying the fees that it'll take to get the, and the expense of getting the antennas up there until, whether it's fall or winter.
Do we know what the leasing fee is going to be at Middlesex, or are we going to...
We've allocated a certain amount of money to it, and that's one of the things that we're also assuming won't happen until we get to it.
We're pretty sure we won't have the same surprise.
Um, yes.
Okay.
But, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we were on, I mean, it's something we should confirm, but yes.
Okay.
They, they have a, a good relationship with the Concord Fire Department, and we still have connections through that. And so there's a presumption that that will not be the SBA problem.
And Nurse-Nac's going on the existing towers?
Yes. Yeah, it's a, apparently, it's a...
Yeah, we have, we have a ham.
It's quite an...
We have a hamper Peter on that tower.
It's quite an array of, of antennas. And right now, I think, police are on there, and it will be police and fire that will both be on, within, I think, within the same space that it is, but it's new antennas.
Okay. And so, sorry, I just wanted to, about, you know, about the site itself and the new site, are saying okay, doesn't mean it's just going to go get built, it's going to go through a site plan review process.
Yes, but with all expectation that it will. I mean, part of the, a decent chunk of the expense is the engineering and preparation for filing, so we don't, we don't want to...
900-foot diameter, the...
No, you don't for public safety.
Oh, you don't for public safety? Okay.
Right, right. Public safety is not subject to the local wireless bylaw, but it is, because it's a non-residential use, it's subject to site plan review.
Goes into my other question.
The other one that, Proctor, that one isn't...
It's public safety, and the one at Banda's is public safety.
But then that would, if it isn't, if it does not conform to all the, the bylaws, then it would be, we would not be able, in a position possibly, to rent it.
So, I believe, so what, what we've done is, our consultant on this whole project has sent out a notice to all of the cellular companies that might want to sit here and saying, this is what we're planning on...
Including the ones that are on the current pole, I hope.
Um, yes, to, I mean, it was basically to all of the carriers that one, that one would.
Strengthen our negotiating position.
And basically said, you know, we're doing this, if you're interested in taking part in this and, you know, paying for some part of this work, then we're interested in hearing from you. And already got a response back from AT&amp;T, which is interested in providing, being the provider for something called FirstNet, which is the global or, or national public safety connection that's supposed to be happening. And their general goal is to provide the FirstNet as part of their contract with the federal government and be able to have cellular on those same locations. So the letter, the email that went out to them said that any antennas that you would want to have would have to be interior-mounted antennas and would have to meet the standards of the bylaw and so on. of the bylaw and so on. And if that was the case, they would be responsible for the permitting and meeting whatever the requirements were. So we're looking into that.
So I'm, yeah, I was just wondering if you've already looked into it and if the-
Well, we're, we're seeing if anybody's interested.
Right.
And, and that'll be one of the questions. And the note I sent back to it was, if we get into any discussion about this, whoever we're talking to about it has to be prepared to agree to a very tight timeline. And one of the issues with AT&amp;T thus far, anyway, is that it seems like there's a separate group that looks at sites and another group that actually does the work. And if there's a, you know, six-month gap between those or something, we're not going to be able to wait.
However, if we were willing to front the price, you know, the cost ourselves anyway because we're avoiding the 15,000 a year and we were, you know, even if we, we will have to pay for this if we don't get anybody else. So if, instead of requiring them to be on board and help to fund it, if we then charge them rent-
Yes.
Maybe that's a-
Right. And that would be, in answer to Alan's question, that would be one reason possibly to put up 150-foot as opposed to 130-foot.
That's why, exactly. I don't want us to do something stupid that cuts our nose despite our face, so to speak.
Right. And it's a balance between timing and budget and, you know, I mean, the difference between, these numbers aren't precise, but the difference between 150 and 130 feet might be, say, 20,000 and then at 110 feet might be another 20,000.
And I think I would also go back to the original pole company and tell them what the plans are and see if that helps, you know, budget them at all because-
Yeah, no, I think they're-
I'd just prefer to look for another-
And I think actually it's better, it's better for us to own-
And we also then don't have to worry about all these ending and pulling, coming down or-
Right. But, you know, it's complicated because, I mean, basically, apparently, the new antennas tend to be bigger than the older antennas and harder to put within monopoles, but what they do is they do these sort of bump out things, so it's still sort of a monopole that goes up and bumps out. And I think both, I think 1022 actually just went through that where they actually bumped it out at the top to fit in bigger antennas. They prefer to have them outside and FirstNet may require them being outside, but we'd still require them to have their cellular ones inside. And, you know, we would have to very quickly get into some serious discussions of the permitting and the bylaw and all that stuff.
Okay. Great. And you had a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the 106, if for some reason that doesn't pass in a special town meeting or next town meeting, there isn't anything in there that is ultra critical?
Um, well, I mean, they're all things that, I mean, except for the Concord municipal light, I mean, fiber connection, I think all the other things are things we want to do, but if we didn't do them, we would still have a system. But, I mean, one of the things is paving the access drive to Bana Davis. So if that didn't happen, that would be okay. But I think all the others we would want to do and it seems to me that basically, town meeting approved getting the system up and this is a way to do it that long-term is cheaper than what we proposed.
No, I'm not saying that they won't.
No, I understand.
But it's, yeah, I'm just saying, if for some reason-
Right. That's exactly why we're coming here, is just to make you aware of this and, you know, the hope would be that the logic will be as clear to town meeting as it is to, hopefully, to you.
This depends on who's doing the presentation.
Yes, well-
At this point, sorry, at this point, what's your expected timeframe for having it come live?
Um, I would hope by this fall, but, I mean, everything else is moving along. I mean, the Police Department is already using all the mobiles and portables that were sort of new equipment. Fire Department and DPW using some of the mobiles. The school isn't using any yet because the system they use is an entirely different simplex system. And once the new antenna's up and running, it'll be a total switch and so they'll use those radios. The entire system, all of the antennas and everything, was set up and I think the dispatch console was all set up in the last two days at a cybercom facility. And Chief Fisher and the dispatchers and I believe some people from fire have been out there the last two days to sort of see the whole thing working. So all that stuff is still moving along. So really, the, once the fire station tower goes up and once the foundation is in and meets the standard, that will go up fairly quickly. So the last piece of what we need essentially within the town is the one I'm talking about here. And, I mean, for all, I, you know, the tower segments take from anywhere from 30 to 90 days to get ordered and delivered. And we have, we're not going to do that ordering till we make it through permitting, so, you know, a month to get to permitting and then a month for permitting and then, say, three months to get the stuff and then it gets up. So that's about six months, which, hopefully, before the end of the year.
Okay.
But as we find, as we go through this, there's, it's a big project and there's a lot that's not within our control. But everybody is doing what they can to move it along, which is why, you know, we're meeting there tomorrow morning. I mean, I'm going away for two weeks and-
What are we going to do?
Wanted to, I wanted to make sure the stuff was happening while I was gone.
We'll just stop doing everything so we don't screw anything up while he's away.
Anyway.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Thoughts on-
More of a better, switching the console out, is that, is that going to be a, does the system go down while they do that? How do they-
No, they, I mean, it's the kind of thing that they do all the time and so they know how to do it. And they basically bring in the new console and get, they don't take anything out. So none of the old antennas, none of the, none of the old stuff is going to be taken down till the new is up and running. But they, we've asked that question and they assure us that this is a standard thing that they do because they sell new equipment and towns upgrade all the time and, and they, you know, the other question that came up was the, you know, the police station work that'll be done, that all this stuff is in a room that's not one of the areas that's going to be done and so presumably it won't be impacted by this.
That's a pretty tight space as it is.
Yes.
And then for cell tower height again, room for growth, I think it's going to be, literally, room for growth is going to be, because it's line of sight and if-
Oh, yes, no.
-get those trees and they get to be higher-
Exactly.
You're, you're really-
Yes. Now, the extension-
Are you saying go 150?
Well, go as, as high as you, is practicable and, because it's, I just don't want to have to do it again.
Yeah. And, I mean, it's one of those things, it is one of those things where, and we can, we'll talk about it and we'll talk about it tomorrow with them, you need different foundations and you need different structure. And if you, if you want to allow for extension, then the structure's more expensive and that sort of thing. So you have to consider all those things.
So you'll be coming back to us with some data or-
No, I think, no, I think basically the, you know, Tim is sort of authorized to proceed and this group will continue to advise and-
We're saying it's up to 150 feet, it's up to them to decide.
Up to 150 feet, okay.
Yeah. And we will-
Or 149,500 dollars.
Well, I would like to know, I would like to know what kind of money we're talking about and I'd like to know about it sooner rather than later.
I will definitely come back and report to you.
Because we, you know, I don't want to have some, a surprise at the end of the year.
But I think, I think the idea is that it's 149,500 potentially less than contingency.
Um, yes.
Less than, no.
And that's an outside figure.
It's not, it's already more than the contingency.
No, no, but less, I mean-
Take the contingency out of that number.
It's 149, right.
Right.
And we still have that 43,000 in contingency.
But you're taking that money out from other things so that we don't have to pay for it this year, we're going to ask for it next year or this fall.
Right. And, and if, you know, if we get in a bind, you know, we'll come back and say, we'd like you to, I mean, the theory was that if there was a special town meeting for some other reason, we would ask then as opposed to waiting. But if, you know, if we find that some of these other things should be going forward, you know, we would come to you and say, we need this, let's do a special town meeting and get your, but my answer wasn't that we wouldn't come back for approval, but as soon as we have any information, Tim will inform you as part of the town administrator's report and if-
I'm thinking in terms of budget because this project is going to be more than the 3 million that we had originally budgeted. And I'd like to know how much more it's going to be and I'd like to plan, be able to plan and, you know, advance and not be kind of-
Well, the budget only covered construction. It didn't cover service contracts or leases or any of those things. One of the things that you approved, that was approved at town meeting was authorizing you to enter in lease agreements for cell towers. So the budget never was covering those things anyway.
But it would also be nice to know how much the whole project costs then, including all of that.
Yes.
Because your town needs to know.
Yes, and we are, you know, every time we sit down, we, you know, we, we look at spreadsheets that show what the changes are, but that information, as we move through this, we will keep you informed. You know, the engineer hasn't been out to the site yet, they'll be there tomorrow morning and, you know, these are all based on estimates of what it should cost to do these things. But the, the good news about any request at town meeting will be that we will have, should have, very hard numbers.
Thank you.
So I don't, this isn't something we need to vote on, is it?
I don't think so.
At this point.
It's mostly to just acknowledge that you agree with the approach that we're taking. I mean, it's, I don't know whether it's something you need to vote on or not.
We don't need the additional appropriation at this time.
Right, so-
Unless it's going to come out like wildly different than this estimate.
We have no reason to think that it will, but-
I think that's what I was trying to get at, you know.
If it changes, then we'll be back.
We're talking 100,000 in round numbers.
And, you know-
It would be around 11 years of pay, payback if we were doing the rental or the lease and, you know, that's kind of what I'm looking for.
And, you know, and we are at least doing the due diligence to see if there are any cellular companies that either would provide lease money or, you know, and-
And I guess I would like to know also what you think the upkeep of that tower will be over the years. Because now we own it, so we're going to have to keep it up and I think the maintenance-
So one of, yes, and so one of the questions that we've been looking at is whether one signs a, pays for a service contract or whether you deal with costs as, as they come up and not, not primarily for the towers, but for all the equipment. And so that's one of the things we, we need to look at. And so we've asked the public safety people now who've been dealing with this stuff, you know, what the expenses have been and, you know, that's one of the things that'll come up is which way you go. And it's, you know, it's, it's like buying insurance if, if you pay more each year versus-
Except oftentimes though, if you have the service contract, you have a guaranteed SLA for how long it's going to take them to get there to fix a problem.
Right. And that was one of the things we looked at. And, and, I mean, the largest piece of equipment is the console and so that's likely to, you know, be an item that you pull out separately and do whatever it is that somebody recommends. I mean, everything that I've told you about this is all stuff that's above my pay grade and not part of my technology.
Again, I'm just trying to think in terms of, you know, when you buy a car, let's say, you know, you think about just what you paid for the car, but then you forget that, gee, it's 10 cents a mile when you use it and that you really need to have all this other extra money around because if you don't maintain that car, it's not going to last as long and it's going to cost you more ultimately, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
So I'm just trying to-
Yes, yes.
Make sure that we're thinking about all those things in advance and stuff.
Yes. And there, the one other thing is that there are some things that we're paying now that we won't have to pay. They're, they're not, in the grand scheme of things, they're, you know, they don't come to the scale of what we're talking about, but we're paying lease fees for copper wire and various things that we won't need to be paying for once we're all connected via fiber. And so, you know, at some point, Tim and whomever can sort of figure out what those, well, the savings are there, just so we're aware.
Maybe we put those savings in a special account for maintenance. Because, well-
Are there generators at each of these towers?
Um, I believe so. The one at Bana Davis is sharing the generator that's already there for the wastewater treatment plant. And I believe there's, there'll be a generator at each of the other ones.
Some of the received sites do not. So I don't think Procter does, for example.
Okay. Yeah, so some of the, I think Proctor's-
They're all the send sites.
All right. So are we all okay with this? Kate?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay. A lot of time was allocated to that, that one.
Yeah, that's okay.
So why don't we jump over to the town administrator's report? Hillary.
Some filler.
You don't want to review all those contracts?
Well, I want to wait until 8 o'clock.
Oh, okay. During the town administrator's report, I wanted to make you aware of a request. Actually, Chief Sarals is here. This evening, he's requested to use the Highland Building for our department training as they've used in the past.
Burn it down.
Nothing yet.
You said that maybe.
So maybe the chief could explain to you what they have in mind, but-
Come on up and tell us about it.
Take the hot seat.
So we actually used it last Wednesday. So it's nice to have a building where you can do that kind of thing. So last Wednesday, we actually disconnected it from the fire alarm circuit, filled it with pretend smoke, fog, and set a flashlight off, which is the fire, and had a drill. So we had, you know, a 140-pound dummy in the basement to be rescued and we had a firefighter get lost in the closet and have to get rescued and, you know, all of the kinds of things that one does. And it, you know, you can do this in a field, but it's not, not nearly as relevant to the people doing it. So, so we've done it in the past. We don't, it didn't flow water, obviously, inside it, but you can do almost everything else without really doing any damage. So that was, that was-
And you did it last, on the 8th?
Yeah. But-
Was it during school hours?
No. So we usually train between 7:00 and 10:00 p.m. on Wednesday nights.
Because one night when the alarm went off, they were already there.
There's the one night the alarm didn't go off.
Yeah. At some point, we can have discussions about putting a dehumidifier in there so that we don't get so many of those. But, but in any case, it's nice to have a building to do that with. We've done it in the past when, when David was kind of more managing it. Now that he isn't, I just want permission that we can do this when we need to.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
What do we do with the Highland Building?
I mean, you know, I know. I wish, I wish we could use it-
Training.
For more than just training, but-
All right. So I don't think we need to vote on this, right? So it sounds like you have approval to use it as needed for training.
Knock yourselves out.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Later, number two, is the proclamation for Ray Samity Day. Gina Fox was here earlier. You did a proclamation last year and the proposed proclamation, your packet does name it as the second Sunday in June, so that it, you wouldn't have to add the date in each year?
I see, I see.
It would be each year.
Second Sunday. I'm sorry, the one I'm looking at says-
Mine has the date.
Sunday, June 9th.
Your motion has the date in it.
The motion?
Yes. The motion is incorrect, in other words.
Okay. All right.
So we just change that to say, on the second Sunday?
Second Sunday?
Yeah.
In June.
Sunday in June.
Well-
For the annual, yeah, just for the annual.
Okay. There's two things. There's the proclamation and then there's the permission for the use of the town common.
That's right.
So don't we have to do that every year, though? The, the permission for the town common?
That, right.
Okay.
Last year was Center Park, this is the first time they're using it.
Where's the proclamation then?
That's, that's correct. The motion is correct then because that's for the, the use of the-
Right.
Right.
Common, and we don't have a copy of the proclamation.
As far as I know, I didn't see it.
We don't? But we did-
I don't see it.
I don't, I don't see it. The voice-up, the proclamation.
The second Sunday in June is Race Hamity.
Unless it's somewhere else.
Go ahead and do it.
All right.
All right, I will take a motion.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen proclaim the second Sunday of June as Race Hamity Day in Carlisle.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Is there a move, a motion for the 2019?
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the use of Carlisle Town Common on Sunday, June, and I've, of course, it's the ninth, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, for the second annual celebration of Race Hamity Day in Carlisle.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, I guess, when we give her the proclamation and the approval, we just need to make sure she knows she needs to come back?
For the use of the-
Yeah, the use of the common.
And/or wherever they want.
Right.
Any public land, yeah.
Okay. Moving on, the next item has to do with appointments, the Municipal Facilities Committee and the Finance Committee, will be doing annual appointments over the next few meetings, but the FinCom appointments are different in that they expire with the end of the town meeting. So, we had two FinCom terms that expired at town meeting, one is Jim Dar, who wishes to be reappointed, and the other is Tom Smith, who has sold his house and moved out of town, so there, there is a vacancy to be filled on the Finance Committee, I know they're, they're-
This is the problem with coming to Board of Selectmen meetings, we just look out here, and we just nominate.
Phil needs a committee. So, they're, they're, they have a recruit who looks promising, so the, but I think in the meantime, if, if the Board would vote to reappoint Jim Dar to a three-year term, that we could do that this evening.
I move reappoint Jim Dar of, I forgot which, where he lives, I know the name of the street, it's up on near Rick Davis', anyway, to, it's a three-year-
Three-year term.
On the FinCom.
Second.
Is that good enough? You'll fill in there and sit it?
You'll look up his address, right?
We can fill you out, just, it's a reappointment, too.
I know the name of the street, I just can't-
Any further discussion? Okay, seen none? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Okay.
And we'll hear back on the other one.
And, well, Kate might want to speak briefly on the, the Facilities Committee is losing two members, and where it's a-
We are, and-
Five-member board, they, they really need-
We did some arm twisting this morning, but Steve Hinton is, is, is willing to be, you know, take minutes and come in when he's in town, but he's working on a project at work, and when, as soon as that's done, he's out of here in his new, you know, camper van, or whatever they call it, so, he really does not want to be a full member. So, we do need two members, and Josh is taking at least a one-year sabbatical, so. And we have to, the Board also has to discuss whether we can, Josh was there because we had a school committee member, we now have Rob Fortado, who is the school facilities manager, who comes and attends our meetings when he's able to, do we want to reconsider having, then, then it got changed, and then there was no school committee, it wasn't after Rob, I don't know why you guys changed it, that was before I came in.
Five interested citizens, I think, is how they describe now.
So, it's just five interested citizens, do we want to reconsider and have the school involved again, or not, and I, I think there's still some things we need to talk about for the Facilities Committee, so. I don't know if anybody else has any.
So, I don't, I don't recall why we took the school committee off, though, for some reason I have affiliate, it was because we couldn't get anybody from the school committee during that period of time, but-
Was there from the school committee?
Always, yeah.
So, what we could do possibly is invite somebody from the school committee, if they don't show up, then we find somebody else, that would give us only one other that we'd have to find.
Well, Melinda just walked in.
Greetings.
Would you be interested in being in the Municipal Facilities Committee as a, as a representative of the school committee?
Right, because Josh was the previous-
Yeah, yeah.
We don't really need to put you on the spot like that.
Well, not officially, but, yes, not.
Just convenient timing.
It would just be good to know, at some point, it would be good to know if the school committee would like to have somebody representing the school on the school committee, right now it's five, it's-
Municipal Facilities Committee.
Yes, what did I say?
On the school committee.
Okay, maybe school committee wants to be on the school committee, I don't know.
We all know what you meant.
Five, it's a five-person committee?
Yeah.
It is.
So, there's one vacancy now.
No, well, there's, there's two, one of them was a member of the school committee, and so, we just want to know, does the school committee want to have somebody on there, before we, before we just go ahead and ask anybody from town if they want?
Right, thank you for that, we'll take that up at our next meeting and discuss it.
Okay. And then, we need to find one other one, is there anybody interested?
With a knowledge of facilities?
Somebody with a knowledge of facilities willing to-
Put some time in, yeah.
Put some time into it?
Okay, we are going to also, I think-
Did you just say, yeah?
Be advertising at the mosquito, right?
Yes, yeah, all the vacancies.
There will be an advertisement for, anybody invited, interested.
So, you'll still have a chance.
Every time I see him, I ask him, I think he's pretty, he's been pretty consistent in saying no, so.
Who's that, Phil? I don't know, I'm sensing a weakness.
You think we can stare him, how much time do we have before our next agenda?
I was considering crying, but, you know.
We still have, we still have five minutes.
I'm keeping that card in my back pocket, you know.
All right, so, we'll take that up next time, and Phil and I are gonna go have some beer.
You're buying. All right, moving on, just to make the Board aware, from time to time, we get requests from people who want to salvage materials from Greeno Barn, or maybe cherry pick is the word, they wanna kind of take some items, but they don't, don't want responsibility, you know, for the whole thing necessarily. I think the last time we discussed it, we were hoping, we were, we need to put it out to bid to someone who, who would not only salvage it, but would remove it, remove the foundation and leave it, you know, as, as it once was, you know, undisturbed earth. We haven't talked about it for a while, so maybe it's something we want to put on the agenda in the future.
I think it's big for this year, I think it is gonna end up costing us money, though.
Either that or-
Probably not with appropriation to remove it. Yeah, I did meet with somebody once there, who was potentially interested in it, but I never heard back. So, you know, we certainly want to advertise it as much as we can, anybody who's interested in the barn, and is willing to take it down, we definitely want to hear from them.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just go back to number three again?
Yeah.
The Municipal Facilities Committee? So, we just allocated a lot of money for the Facilities Committee to do other things, is there, is only having three people on that committee, you know, for the next several weeks going to jeopardize any of the progress?
No, but it's certainly not helpful.
Because all three, all three are gonna have to be able to meet in order to-
Yes, exactly.
And all three are gonna, yeah, it's just a lot more to manage.
That's, I mean, that's why I came directly from the airport to the meeting this morning, because it's-
The good thing is, a lot of projects run away now.
Yes.
For months, we were kind of neutral, you know.
So, what's the risk of our not having, of our waiting?
Well, we have to be doing our planning for the next year, because the buildings are not taking any time off from falling to pieces, and we just had, for instance, the TBA went and did a survey of the library, and there are definite problems there, which might run around one hundred, you know, there's, there's mold, because there's not adequate ventilation under the roof, and it's a warm roof and not a cold roof, there's no air things, and there's part of it's a slate roof, which is exceedingly expensive whenever you want to do anything on it.
Slate on the bar, yeah.
And then, there's, there are air handler issues, and apparently, in fact, I think Bill was quoted on this, the gas in the, in the, the refrigerant in the chiller is an old-fashioned gas, and we're using, actually, we're having to go and find salvaged gas from other old-fashioned things, which is very expensive, so-
And so, the two people who-
We've got problems.
The two people who are getting off of this, are they off effective immediately, or are they-
No.
On until the end of June?
They thought they would, they, they thought they were getting off now, and I, I informed them that they're only off the end of June.
Okay.
So, we're, I'm-
So, we have a full committee right now?
We do until the first of July, yes.
And the people who want to get off agree to that? We can't actually tell them what to do.
No, we can't, yeah, I think Josh will be back, he was, he was trying to say goodbye to us, and we said, no, 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 not to, not tonight, Josephine.
All right.
Eight o'clock, do you want to-
Sure.
Go to eight o'clock agenda, and then come back to this?
All right, thank you. Eight o'clock is the ground lease for the transfer station.
In your packet, you have the proposed, proposed lease agreements for the transfer station in the school property, also the power purchase agreement and proposed pilot agreements. Of course, there's been some news in the, in very recent days regarding these projects, and we've got three members of the solar lease working group here tonight to talk about that, I think Bob Clark is probably most conversant with the details of the proposed leases, but again, he might, you know, might not be moving forward at this point at all, we don't know. The Emmeresco has backed away from the transfer station as a site, they wanted a short period of time to consider whether they could do the project at CPS as a standalone project, whether it made economic sense to continue with that, and I know the school committee has reviewed the proposed lease on their end, but I think until we, we hear from the proposed vendor, we, we wouldn't know whether we were going forward at all, so, I don't know if we want to call these folks forward, but we can, come on up. Have a chair.
You only get one chair, though.
Yeah. One problem, but so.
We'll give the chair to the school committee.
I have a new chair.
I think, I know the Board's aware of the, the issue that surfaced with the transfer station, that deemed to not be a suitable site, because the transfer station was built upon the town landfill, which collected, well, the town dumped and collected trash for many, many years, and there's at least over twenty feet of trash underneath the transfer station, so it makes, securing the foundations for the canopy units difficult, not impossible, for Emmeresco, and they're not willing to go down thirty, forty, or however deep they have to go to find, you know, solid ground, if you will, so. That all kind of blew up at a meeting last week, actually, I won't put the chief on the spot, but I know he was at that meeting last week as well, so maybe I can chime in.
I'm surprised.
Nope.
So, I just want to make sure everybody, because, you know, we all saw it, but there's people who are watching this, at least three or four, and so, the, and I'm just repeating what you said, it was a landfill, there's twenty or thirty feet in some places of trash, right? So, there's, I think the, the evidence is a report from the mid-seventies, when a DPW building was evaluated for the site, that described borings that they took at different locations, there's no map that shows where the borings specifically are, so that would be-
Right, so we don't actually know-
That would be useful to know, but it just described-
Because in reading that, it seemed like it was even under the current DPW building.
Yeah, I guess, I, I had a hard time visualizing it without a, a map, because it talked of edges of property, but you didn't know what the property was at the time.
Right, and I think it's like a few different-
Right, I, I think the idea is along Morse Road, and there was a big hill, and you dumped your trash over, so it'd be where the transfer station is now, and heading toward Wall Road, so it wouldn't be back where the DPW buildings are, it would be from where the transfer station is.
Okay, because the document I read was talking about the footings for the DPW building, and that it would be okay, though, it is still on trash.
It would have been a lot longer ago, the more recent dump was-
Uh-huh.
Which building?
They called it the DPW building, I'm only-
Because there are two buildings, there's the big barn, that was a horse barn, that was there even when people dumped-
I don't know if that, was that the reason why I- It was like a study, it wasn't necessarily, it was just a, kind of study document, saying-
And, there is a new survey now, that we, the Municipal Facilities just did, of the site, and did test borings for subjects, so that could, but not there, they, it was on the back of the site, so.
Okay, so they backed out, well, they didn't back out, they just, it's not feasible for them to-
And, there's also no evidence that the landfill was capped per DEP standards back in the seventies, it, see, it wasn't dumped, but just no, no one's been able to establish that was dumped, so I don't think you could side a facility on the landfill if it wasn't properly, yeah, and there were, some were raised, that transfer stations and-
You need permission to, to do the transfer station on there, we have valid permits to do what we're doing there, we don't have permits to put in foundations for, and with the other.
Okay, and so then, so that takes away half of the project for them right now, right? They're, they have definitely said no.
So, they've decided they're not even going to investigate it further, they're-
No, their email said they're out on that, basically, and they said they would, by the end of the week, let us know whether this, they'd be okay with the school as a standalone.
How do we feel about that?
So, the other thing is, based on what was found, it seems unlikely that any of the other respondents to the RFP would be interested in trying something there, so.
Yeah, they have the same problem.
Yeah, exactly, it's not something specific to this vendor.
Right, it's still trash.
Exactly, so, and any vendor's gonna have the same problems.
Okay, so, transfer station's out, they're gonna get back to us on Friday, whether or not they're interested, or the economics of it as well?
Whether it'll work, I mean, I, so I would advise that we go forward and approve, you know, approve it as is, versus having them want to renegotiate it, since we've gotten this far, if the schools, I mean, I mean, Melinda has some language, I think, recently that changed, and I think the motion was to approve it with giving Town Council the ability to negotiate, find tuning language.
The finances of the two projects were reasonably independent of each other.
Yes.
They were quoted that way in the RFP.
They were quoted, I mean, the RFP was set up that way, the RFP was, was stated that we might give one project to one vendor, and the other project to another vendor, we might do just the ground mount, so it was, it was stated that way, and actually, for the school, the base bid was for the parking canopy with the add-to-the-ground mount, they have always tried to link the projects together, and say, well, they don't really work, but my sense is, well, we'll find out, basically, and my sense is, they've applied for the interconnection, I did that, did, you know, three, four weeks ago, and I, my, the impression they've given is they've got reasonably positive feedback from every source that it would not be overly expensive, so I think that would, that would color their decision as well, but I'm guessing, I don't want to guess.
So, the other-
I would say, for, for the town, I would say half is better than-
Sure.
The, the other factor that we found out at the school committee meeting is the timeline of what they can do at the school, and we were hoping that they would be able to do something this summer, but based on the time that it's gonna take for them to procure the solar panels themselves, it looks like it's not gonna be possible until next summer. And so, school committee is trying to figure out whether they want to do anything in the spring, or go all the way to next summer to do it. However, the financials are all decided based on when we sign all these agreements, not when they actually put a shovel in the ground. So, it's still in our best interests to try to get the lowest block number possible, and so, if we sign everything off, and they go through site plan review and everything in the next few months- in the next few months, then we know exactly how much we're going to make when they actually build it. So, if, assuming they're still interested.
Right, so they can apply to the SMART program after the planning board approval.
Right.
There was, there's nothing about these projects that keeps us from treating them independently. Our, the only concern that, that why we needed to do two of them was, was Amoresco's concern, not ours.
Right. Or two is more money for the town. But yeah, yeah, but Amoresco is the only, was never, it was never stated that way and they've always, they've assumed, again, we'll find out now.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it would be a positive project on its own.
Yeah.
I think.
So I, I think we should move forward.
Right, so I guess in terms of the lease, right, the question is, do you guys have a whole bunch of comments? Do you want to go through it? Do you want to let the lawyers handle it? Do you want to have the lawyers update it and then get back to you? Right? There is a certain time component to it because, you know, we need you guys to sign off on it first, then the school committee needs to sign off on it. And then they can start the survey, the work that they need to do at the school. And then they can get into site plan review. There's a certain number of weeks on that and then we got to get all the way through that before they can actually start to apply for SMART block.
There's no transfer station project this month and won't be signed.
They won't sign the lease, but the wording in the, in the thing that we passed at town meeting says the lease will be approved first by the board of selectmen and then by the school committee and signed by the school committee.
As I understand it, we can approve it.
Right.
Authorizing the lawyer, the legal counsel to make necessary modifications.
Right. So if you have just a couple of modifications, that's fine. But if, you know, if you guys have bigger concerns, it is possible that it would delay us by a block number, but it's not a huge amount of money by the block number now. It's like, what, between?
It's like a five thousand.
Like five, five thousand per block number we end up delaying. So it, it is okay, maybe it is a big money. But in any case, it's not the end of the world if you guys have concerns, but it would be great if you guys could go ahead and do what you're saying, go ahead and approve it with some modifications, so.
I read through, I don't have serious concerns. I mean, I was listening to what, I've been, somebody involved was listening to what the lawyers had to say as they were going through all this. And I think we're safe, assuming now with the authorization to let the legal counsel make necessary minor modifications.
I submitted all my comments to the attorney. I was hoping to be, yeah, to talk to her about it today.
The answer to one of your questions is that the reason there's not a name now is that the company forms a separate corporation.
Separate LLC.
So the name is not known at this time.
So it's still not known, okay.
Still being Amoresco, but they'd be the ones to form it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but I had other question, I, I had.
I might be able to ask him. I've been working pretty closely with Jenny on some of those stuff.
Okay, well, I had three questions. She knows what the, I mean, there were a bunch of typos and things.
Those are modifications.
Typos I don't care about, but one of the things was, and this was in the ground lease and it was under 2.5, where they put in the XXXs for the compensation for any damage while they were installing. And I guess I was wondering why they would put a dollar amount in there in advance because you can't really calculate that and not handle it the way they, because the next sentence says that they, they'll just fix any of the damage.
Right, so my comment today, we originally were thinking about coordinating the paving project with that, which we still are, but we had asked them to give us a paving allowance, remember? And so that was where that would be from. But, so that's going to be, and that was one of my comments as well, they're going to revert, I asked them to revert to the old language, which just says that they will repair any damage done in the process of installation.
Okay.
So we'll see, that's what my recommendation was to.
Jenny said they were going to take, do what you said.
Okay.
They're going to delete that specific dollar amount because it would just be whatever damages.
My other, my other larger concern was on 211, on the financial assurance for electric generating facility removal. Again, it's, you want a performance bond, 100% performance bond at the beginning for removing it 20 years hence, right? And I guess what I wanted to know was if they're, if that was really smart to do 20 years in advance or if they should post a bond now, but then it should be reviewed every few years because of this going to be getting bigger in.
Costs.
In costs. I don't want to fall behind so that we don't have enough money at the end if they default. So I thought we should have either, and, you know, and to be fair, we should have an escalator and de-escalator if it's going the other direction. They should be able to withdraw money from that bond every three years or whatever, I don't, you know, some period of time.
I think the bylaw has some very specific language around that and I think we should probably just, it says it's 125% of the estimated cost is determined by an engineer.
Yeah, I don't know, but anyway, that was something.
So I also had a comment on that section, which was that it says that it will terminate at the end of the lease, but then they have 180 days to decommission it. So I thought that it should stay in effect until 180 days in case they don't decommission it and then we still need to have.
Yeah, okay.
So I basically made that comment.
The other question I had was, can there be eminent domain against us?
I don't, I don't.
Well, because their 2.16 is all about eminent domain. It looked like it was boilerplate for, you know, some regular piece of property somewhere. And if it's not, if, if we can, if we are not subject to eminent domain, I would not like to have this paragraph in there. So that, that was another question. And then the lease was contingent on the town meeting and since the town meeting has already happened and it's already been approved at the town meeting, I would like to take the contingency language out and work with the town meeting in there that included. Do it. Sorry.
Oh, this is great.
This is great.
Absolutely.
Then, and then there were picky things, you know, housekeeping things like suddenly we have section 13 instead of article XIIII and I, I, so I, that must be just made up, but. And I also wanted to make sure that the, in article five payment, that the property taxes, if the town of Carlisle assesses or otherwise requires payment of any property taxes in excess of 11,277 per year relating or attributable to the leased property of the electric generating facility and/or the tenant's use, then the town agrees that such property taxes shall be offset by a corresponding decrease to the annual payment. That was, it was the same number in both of the contracts. I was wondering why it was the same number because they were generating different amounts of power and I just want to make sure that the number in this one is the correct number.
It should be different.
Because there were some wrong things back and forth. And I can give you all these notes if you want.
You sent that to Jenny already.
That's the ground lease.
To town council.
I sure hope so because I was doing this on the plane and I think I got this, I got, I think I got all my notes in there to her.
Did you copy them?
Yeah, she did. I spoke to her today, she did get your comments.
She, I know, but I, I'm just, I just hope I said, I think I got all the, no, I think I got that one in there. Yeah, all right, and then, let me see.
Is it on 11?
Yeah, again, and then on page 20, there was some more subject to town meeting approval language that needs to be fixed. Okay, that was, that was, those were the biggies.
Thank you.
For the ground lease.
My, I mean, the school committee had other questions about the 24/7 access for them. Language didn't seem sufficient to allow the school enough control over the activities when school is in session, so we just asked about how that could be rephrased. And there were some other things just related to adding in the parking lot repairs in another section.
Yeah, it seems like 24 by 7 access is required, but perhaps it's restricted to the type of work that can be done.
If you're just mutually agreeable with notice.
Yeah.
And then I had a question about exhibit B, the construction start in 2019. It says to be eligible for the 30%.
So to be eligible for the 30%, they need to spend 5% of the cost of the project.
Okay, so does that, do they, does that include design or is it construction?
It would be, so they like could, they could buy 5% of the modules or something like that.
So they can meet that requirement?
It's achievable, we should, we should probably fix that language that is.
Because it's, I think, I'm not sure, does it say construction starts specifically? Exhibit. Lease pricing assumes that construction starts in 2019 for a full 30% investment tax credit.
Just that language should be cleaned up. So you want to make sure they can get the investment tax credit, which.
Right.
Really, they control that themselves once. Maybe that can be learned.
So what would be our annual income from this with just the one site?
Let's see, so Bob, it was 11,000 and change for the pilot, if I remember, like 11,277. I don't have that right in front of me. But then it's a function of the SMART block and the SMART block lease payment for the school is 22,500 for block three. So that would be a total of 33, 34,000 if we're in block three. And it goes down by about $5,000 for a block that we dropped there. So if you drop all the way to block six, then it's 9,500 for the lease plus the 11,200.
So 11,277 is the right number, is.
Yeah. Came out of my head, but.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that math didn't work out for me. If we're at 34,000 roughly and you take away 5,000, that's 29,000.
That's per block.
Per block.
If you add the two together, so he's talking.
So if it's block four, then it's, yeah, whatever, 29,000. If it's block five, then 24,000.
Okay.
Roughly, I mean, it's, yeah, it's almost exactly.
So we want to really get into block.
The sooner the block we can get into, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's a lot of things that happen downstream of you guys, right, before we can get there. Basically, it's got to get through site plan review.
Uh huh.
So I think that's the only thing for the school, right?
Anybody have a, any, any further discussion on this? Is it the sense of the board that we go ahead and approve this pending incorporation of the, tonight's comments and any other, you know, edits that, the minor edits, I guess, that the.
Anything to mention might be that you're approving the payment schedule too. So that's kind of, right, that's not a negotiable.
You don't want them coming back and saying, we want to, we want to mess with it now.
Yeah, I'm just saying, they may, you're approving, you're approving a payment schedule and then minor language changes, not, not for someone to negotiate, however they see fit, right? Does that make sense?
So by our doing that, if they want to negotiate anything, you have to come back.
They'd have to come back. Exactly. Does that make sense? I think that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move we approve the lease and payment schedule, subject to minor modifications by legal counsel, as described in the packet tonight.
And as edited, and as.
And as edited, right.
For the school.
For the school.
Does that also include the PPA?
I was going to, that's what I was going to ask.
Probably a separate motion.
All you want, that is, I think that should be a separate motion.
It can be, it can be.
Well, so, but it sounded like you had two documents in there already, so I'd like to, so will you, will you make a motion?
I will accept the amendment to include the PPA.
Okay, solar power purchase agreement, the draft ground lease and the agreement for payment in lieu of taxes for real property and personal property.
So move.
Yeah, you got that, Jen?
Oh, oh, there was a motion.
All right, any further discussion?
Hasn't been seconded.
Is there anybody want to second it?
Second.
Now, is there any discussion? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
The unanimous, thank you.
I'd be happy to discuss any of that.
Okay, yeah, the school committee has scheduled a special meeting for Thursday morning to, specifically to do the same vote, so.
Okay.
We can, so we can keep things moving.
Who actually signed?
Well, the, at that meeting, we'll make, we'll probably make a motion to have the chair of the school committee sign on behalf of the committee once the, once the amendment, the edits are done, so.
Thank you for all your work on this. Sorry this is getting so complicated.
What's that?
Thank you for all your work on this. Sorry.
So much fun, it's a little time.
Could you repeat for me the titles of the three documents you just approved?
The, the ground lease.
Yeah, got it.
The purchase and power purchase agreement.
Power purchase agreement?
Right.
Okay, thank you, that's what I need.
Okay.
Payment lieu taxes.
Payment lieu taxes.
Solar power.
All right, so I want to move on. I'm going to go ahead and move on even though we're about five minutes early. So what I wanted to do was, you know, the beginning of, actually, it wasn't even the beginning of last year, I think it was August 14th, the date's right on here. We defined our goals and objectives. And I just wanted to go through this, you know, before handing the dabble that we don't have over to the new chair. I just wanted to go through and, you know, assess how we did against what we said that we were going to do. So, you know, the first, the first bucket of things that we had was really improving communication with other boards. I think we did that in some cases, I think in some cases, I feel like we might have fallen behind a little bit. You know, we did do quite a bit of, a few outreach to personnel board. I think for some reason, things didn't go quite as well this year with FinCon as it had in previous years. So I would say that, you know, for the first bullet here, which is active participation on the part of VOS liaisons to other boards and committees, I think we did pretty well about that. I'm not sure that we did super well about, like, always reporting back what we were doing.
And I, and it was, it certainly wasn't equal across all our liaison responsibilities because of the huge amount of activity in a few of them.
Yes, yes. And I think that that's, and I think that's to be expected, you know, I mean, we're going to get into the liaisons soon. You know, we're not going to decide them tonight, but at least just kind of go through it quickly once, once Barney gets here. Some boards, they don't meet as often, you know, we're just there, we're just there for them to know who to contact if they have an issue. Others, it's much more active involvement and of course, some were actually.
Part of it.
Part of, part of it. And so obviously, there's, there's various levels of participation. So I guess I would give us, give us maybe a B minus on that one for the year, would be my, my thought.
B.
Okay, a B.
Yeah. I guess the question is, do we want to discuss how we could improve this, well, before moving on? Or do you want to just give yourself a grid and move on?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to go through how we did in the past and then I think that part of our, you know.
Okay.
I think, you know, part of the, next year's goals would be kind of going through that. I mean, but, but certainly as we're going through this, and if you want to bring up anything, I don't, I do not want to cut off the, the conversation.
Well, I just, you know, it, I don't know how we do this any differently. First of all, we all have, you know, like, there's a gazillion things, we all have 13 to 16, you know, assignments. I think, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't give some thought as to prioritizing and I don't want anybody to feel that their committee isn't important, but the thing is, there's certain importance to us in terms of, you know, our job in, in shepherding, you know, the tax rate, for instance.
I think, I think you have to leave that up to the individual liaison to make that decision, because I think any given year, those priorities will change depending on the work to be done in a particular committee that, this, this year, for instance, the solar working group is a huge commitment. That's probably going to go away, which will give you time then to work on other things.
Okay, but I think maybe we could look forward and say, well, this year, it'll be, you know, continuity to them or it could, it would be the cell tower so that, you know, we know where we're, so we don't have surprises at the end of the day, they're suddenly, gee, they're asking for 100,000, where did that come from? And, and was it well considered? And, you know, because if you have somebody there all the time, they can either vouch or say, well, you know, the, whatever.
What I was going to suggest for this one for next year is, I was going to suggest that it's on our goals for next year, but I was going to suggest that, that we identify the liaison roles. liaison roles, or where we're actually actively on the committee, because these committees, we put together for a reason, right?
Yes.
And so I was going to say, we identify those that we would like some more formal updates on, and it would be the liaison who would provide that update and bring people in as needed, but it would be a more formal, sometimes we leave it to the very end, the liaison roles, and the next thing you know, we're talking about FinCom, right? That, you know, there are certain periods of time when it shouldn't be a liaison report, right? I mean, it should be something in there where the liaison is leading a discussion.
I agree with you, and that's what, where I was trying to get to with this conversation of how are we going to fix this? Because we can't be everywhere at every time, there are some.
I would say this year, this past year, there was, there were more liaison reports than I had experienced in some previous years, which was great, because it just meant that there was, you know, just a lot more involvement.
Yeah.
Or at least more interest in sharing what was going on. But we had a lot going on this year. I'm not trying to knock the previous Board of Selectmen.
No, no.
So improving the relationships between the Board of Selectmen, the Trust and the Housing Authority, I would say that we failed on that one.
I don't know that we failed.
We certainly need to improve the relationship.
That was the year before, the year before was the big failure. This year, we've gone along very well with our housing authority.
Better defining the role of the personnel board, I think we did that, but I think we need to continue, and I think this was probably not properly worded, the role of the personnel board, but I think that, you know, we need to finish up that process. And you gave it to the personnel board, I'm assuming they haven't had a chance to meet?
They have the meeting this week.
Okay. So I would say that that's something that we still want to do. I mean, that would give us a C, because it's still open, but I don't know if anybody disagrees with that.
That's good, yeah.
We're just going through the goals for last year, just to kind of close it out. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen.
We're probably, sorry to be late, but we had a lovely concert.
I welcomed you before when you weren't here.
Oh.
That's the way it works.
But, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, I'm glad to be here.
So, personnel town halls, goals and reviews for all direct reports to the Board of Selectmen, we did not do that.
No.
It's something that we actually have to do, so I'm going to propose, when we get to it, that it's a goal for next year. Complete the town administrator's contract, we did that.
Yeah, we can do it off, I think.
The police chief contract, we did that.
Yes.
The school committee, teachers' contract, we did that. We did not ensure the establishment of reviews for all staff. Hire a new chief, we did that, and we assisted, we supported in the hiring of deputy chief, because this was for last year, so that was burnt.
Right.
That was burnt. So we hired a chief twice, should get extra credit.
And what's missing from here is we also had, did the police contract.
Yeah.
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 And determine where succession plan should be considered, we've started.
Yeah, police union contract, we did, we really didn't do, you know, we talked a lot about the need to do succession planning, but we really didn't formalize that.
Yeah, we really have to focus on that.
Yeah, so I would say that should be on next year's. Policy updates, so everything was reviewed as part of putting the policies online, but I don't know that we actually did a very in-depth review. David Friedman did a review, but that doesn't change a policy, so I think we probably want to, we want to look at this again. And the financial policy, I'm pretty sure a lot of work went into that, but not by me.
Well, we've got a number of draft financial policies, and part of what Barney's going to be doing this year is working with this board and the finance committee to start adopting some of those policies.
Okay.
They exist, depending on budget.
Yeah, so this was the document that we had, you know, that was drafted, it was bound, right? And it was kind of going through that and making it more formal.
That's right.
Okay, so that's something I think we should complete this coming year.
Yep.
So I would say we failed on the policy updates, just to be honest with ourselves. Town finances.
I just want to say one thing, we were very busy putting out fires this year, but I also want to support the idea of really hitting the ground, running all these policies, because I think it's going to be very important. It would, if we had some of these things done, it would have made our job easier this year, because we could have pointed the policy and say, you know, we're doing it this way because this is the way we're going to do it, you know?
Yeah, so the thing is, I think, you know, this stretch now, after town meeting and before September, is when we really need to hammer these home, because this is when we have the lull.
Yeah, you feel like, oh gee, we don't have anything to do, but we really do, these are the things we have to do now, so that when it gets busy, then we have those policies in place, we're all on the same page with the FinCom and everybody else, and we can move forward, I think, a lot faster.
Okay, town finances, it looked like we were even better this year for the audit issues, but there was still some outstanding.
It was a tough year for the finance department.
Yeah.
The municipal upgrade, and the finance director leaving mid-year, and the audit kind of getting behind schedule. And Priscilla helped things together for a period of a number of months, so that we're back, I think, more to normal now for the finance director. They tell you, it felt like a very long year to them, but, you know, we've got things ahead.
Right. The next one, you know, I think that, I don't think we did anything on it, but I think for next year, what I would like to see is us really being very, very clear, not only with ourselves, but with Carlyle citizens, what the impact is of various spending increases.
It was done well at a global level this year, but not with individual components.
Right, and so, you know, like, each $100,000 adds what? And because I think, my opinion is, this has to be our laser focus. You know, we need to be thinking all the time as to what we're spending our money on, and ensuring that that tax increase is as small as possible. And the only way we're going to know how to do that is understanding at a fundamental level, what are the impacts of the various increases that we have? You know, if we're, if we're saying, oh, $100,000 for the tower, and we know that it's going to be over 10 years, we should already know what the impact is on the individual citizen for that, that decision. And so I think, you know, I think it's just really, really important, and so, you know, I'm happy to work with FinCom or, you know, Finance, or whoever else can. I think it's just, it's educating ourselves and educating the citizens isn't just going to be helpful, and I think that also goes with ensuring that as we're reporting the costs out, that it's the full costs. I mean, I think, you know, we need to make sure that retirement and health costs are, you know, while maybe not accounted for on an ongoing basis in each bucket, when we're looking at the budget, we're looking at the overall budget, and seeing the whole picture.
I guess I would also like to know, what did each individual, kind of a history, maybe looking five years back, of which individual, individual departments, how much did they actually spend in each actual line item? Because what I think happens is they bring back their same budget year after year after year, because that's what they've gotten, they'll give you, you know, they'll put in a two or two and a half percent increase for their salaries, but then they play with the money back and forth within the lines, which they, you know, they can do, but I don't think it gives us a sense of, how much do they really need, and what are they using it for? So I would love to do, you know, a zero-based exercise to find out, what did you actually spend over the last five years, and which buckets did you spend it out of?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things that I've always brought up during the budget process, because I'm trying to remember, but there's a budget for, I mean, there's a line for the next fiscal year.
You're going to eat something.
You know, the next fiscal year guideline, and then there's, and then there's a, and then there's the two previous years, but it's all what was budgeted.
It was, exactly, that's what I'm trying to say, it's always what was budgeted, not what did they spend, and I would like to get a handle on that.
So, yeah, so, you know.
But we couldn't ask for it last year because of all the transitions of everything. Hopefully, once we're up and running this year, we'll be able to be asking for some of that background data.
So continue to educate boards on town finances was one, I think we did that. Continue to work with the finance committee, and so, you know, this is, we did do the hard cutoff dates, but for some reason, we ended up in a worse situation this year than we were last year. And I think, you know, we did improve the personnel request process, but we haven't, we haven't resolved the personnel board quorum issues.
And we still had timing issues.
And we still, well, we, I think largely because of the quorum issues, but for some reason, you know, you know, at least I feel like this year was worse than last year. You know, we got, and I don't think, it wasn't FinCom, FinCom was getting things late, you know? We got the long-term caps very, very late, we got the facilities committee numbers, which were long-term caps primarily, but we got them very, very late. You know, we can't get something like that to Board of Selectmen meetings before, because everything's already printed. And it just, it really bound our hands into what we could adjust, because we couldn't decide, oh yes, we'll give those hours, because that was going to be an amendment on the floor of the operating budget, and we don't want to do that. And, you know, we couldn't decide, no, we're not going to do this big project, because it was already there and anybody could make the motion. So I just think we need to make sure that, you know, we push those dates back even further. And maybe part of it was, you know, was me that I wasn't pushing us to vote on things, but I didn't feel like we had the information to vote. It's hard to decide, do you support it or not, if you don't know how much it's going to cost. But, you know, I mean, I certainly take a lot of the responsibility, but I think that we need to make sure that we work on this even more.
I think another thing that we did this year, which I kind of liked, was, you know, long-term, long-term caps always comes in around 300,000 to 400,000, you know, and maybe, you know, we look at that a little tighter, you know, like we did this year, and we start to pull some of the things out, like the, you know, actually, my kids actually said, oh yeah, they're coming in to paint the stairwells, right? You know, and that was one of those items that we said, well, is that really a long-term cap? Or is it, you know, so we focus even more, I guess intently, on, you know, the long-term caps, and stuff that does seem to hit us later, and just make sure that everybody knows they're not guarantees, you know? I mean, it seems like, oh, it's long-term caps, it's in the 300,000 to 400,000 range, okay. You know, but this year, I like the way that we actually went through, and, you know, we were separate on, you know, some of the items. I mean, I think that's, that's a good way to do it.
Well, I think, I personally think that, like, working on policies in this lull is important and things like that, I think that we need to try to sit down with FinCom and come up with, you know, what can we do potentially to radically try to change what our spending is, to at least evaluate it? You know, what happens if we don't do this? You know, let's just have the discussion.
Consequences.
Yeah, and so that way, you know, committees and boards can be thinking about that and looking into it, so that when we get around to the next town meeting, we can say, we looked at this, and, you know, we saved this money, but we couldn't cut here. And, you know, I think that's what we should be spending our summer with.
Yeah, well, and also some of the things, not to, a little sidetracked on this, but also some of the things that we discussed, like that 80,000 in there for the technology, right? I think this board was pretty well set, and obviously, you weren't on it, so I'm not going to speak for you, but that, you know, we were going to go back to school and say, look at that 80 is not going to be a continuous thing, you know, we need to figure out a better way to do this.
If it is technology, put it in the technology budget, that's where it belongs.
Right, and I think it's, you know, because even, I had to talk with, was it Scott? Scott, at a thing at school one day, about, you know, long-term caps, and some of the things that fell in there, well, they've always been in there, but is that the right thing? You know, I mean, now's the time to really figure that out, so.
And we need to communicate that early.
Yeah, exactly.
In the budget process.
That's what I'm saying, this summer, this summer, we just need to work on it.
I agree.
Hopefully, it will be a dialogue rather than.
Yeah, 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 no, it's going to be a back and forth, but that's just it, it's not, it can't be, you know, in February, we're going, uh-oh, wait a second, why, why is this in here, wait a second, we can't.
We're taking eminent domain over the school anyway.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. I think also, maybe we have to stop, if it's a long-term cap, we shouldn't be doing it year to year, we should be looking at least five years, since these things are supposed to be lasting five years minimum. So, and if they're not lasting five years, it, I mean, we really have to say, if it's not a five-year or more item, it's not in long-term caps, and we know then what, normally, you should be able to inventory what your assets are, and which ones are going to last that long, and be able to plan in advance, and then take care of it. It's not this little ditty, ditzy things that, you didn't know where else to put it in your budget, so you threw it in the long-term caps.
Well, I guess maybe, maybe it's a fundamental misunderstanding on my part, but the town doesn't actually do long-term caps, right? We don't depreciate things, do we?
Right, no.
So, I really think that what we need to be thinking of that long-term caps as, is being projects, right? It's, here's a project that has to fall outside of the operating budget.
Like a capital improvement, kind of?
Yes, it's a capital improve, that's exactly right, and that's not what has been, it has been in the past.
It was kind of ongoing operating type things.
So this would be a topic of discussion between us and FinCom, and possibly the school, in fact, definitely the school, to talk about, what is long-term caps, what do we want to be doing? And then we could budget it, we could say, we, okay, for these sorts of things, we are always going to set aside a certain amount of money, so that those projects don't go by the wayside, because they shouldn't be cut, because that's the only place we could cut, you know? That's going to be a, you know, feature of the budget.
And it realistically puts things in the regular budget, the operating budget, that ought to be there, so we know what the real costs of things are.
That's right, exactly.
Okay. Outreach.
I was just going to make a comment too, is that some of the long-term caps things were dependent on how, how fast the project could get started, and you needed multi-year money instead of just single-year money.
Yes.
That has to be considered too.
Yes, and a lot of them, frankly, a lot of the items in the past couple of budgets were just, you go out and buy it, it was off the shelf, and it wasn't a project at all, it was a purchase.
I think that was volunteering for the municipal.
Yeah, no, you're very knowledgeable of this, sir.
Sounds like a municipal, it's all these type.
Okay, so, you know, I think, you know, we can take credit for all of Dave's work on the website.
Of course, of course.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I do think, you know, we really need to make sure it doesn't go stale, and I know that, Jen, you work on it, and I think we should be thinking of ways that we can use it to communicate with people.
While acknowledging a huge, it's so much better.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's incredible.
And one thing that I, you know, I guess I didn't do it last year, but I did do it two years ago, I think, when I was chair, I think twice I wrote articles on what kind of the Board of Selectmen was working on. I particularly did one before town meeting. I think we want to consider doing that more often, you know, whether it's a letter to the editor, I mean, Betsy just put it right in as a Board of Selectmen update thing, but just more ways for us to get information about what our priorities are, kind of this, you know?
Yeah.
Could I offer something on that too? Because it ran into something the library tried. We were trying to get communication between all the committees in town, get their agendas up in one place, put their projects up in one place, committee events, anything like that. So we hired out to another company who would do this for us, and then we had a citizen come in and object to this, saying that the town website should be doing it.
Mm-hmm.
And we looked back at it and said, yeah, it should, we agree. The town website should be the central location where everybody finds information about what's going on with the boards and committees and activities in town. That's going to take an awful lot more work for somebody to input that information and outreach to the other boards and committees. The library was going to do it because it is the center of information in town, but technically, it should be on the town website. So I was just going to.
Yeah, yeah, I think absolutely, and I think that the. Yeah, yeah, I think absolutely, and I think that the way, you know, the platform that the website is currently in allows for the different departments to do their own updating. I think it's just making sure that it's happening.
That's one of the things we discovered, I think we just need to make sure it happens.
Yeah. Which gets us to our next thing, which is supporting the technology group. I think that we did a terrible job of doing that this year. And the technology group is the one that would, had that, that launched the new website. I think we need to refocus some energy on, on the technology committee.
So, is that a committee or a working group?
It's, it's a, it's a committee, it's a, it's a group that Tim put together.
Okay, well, I guess the question is, do we want to make it a committee? And do, maybe we need to go through our committee roster and see if some that need to fall off and others that need to be put on. And I think a technology one would be pretty important.
Yeah.
That's another discussion.
Yeah, it's really hard to find people who are going to engage. You know, we've really, really struggled with this committee. Bill and I were on it. It's, you know, we've, we've really struggled with the technology committee.
I understand. Hard.
The, supporting the facilities committee, I think we did a good job with that this year. Supporting the communications tower project, I mean, I think, I think we did a, we don't have a liaison on that.
No.
Do we? Yeah, so we might want to have a liaison to that.
We have a communications center.
Yeah, that's different.
Is that the dispatch?
Yeah, that's dispatch. So we might want to do that, or just, you know, the people on that communications center should do it. Greeno barn removal, ooh. We agreed to do it this year.
So did, so somebody actually approached you?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
They just wanted to take some things out of it.
But they want to check.
Probably want some barn timbers or something.
Gee, I know, and I would have done that, I had my barn.
But they didn't want to take the whole barn.
The more people take away, the less there'll be for us to deal with.
Right, but so they did, they weren't saying, can we have it, we will pay to remove it. They were saying, we just want to take a few parts.
Right, and I explained kind of the bigger picture to this gentleman, and he said, well, maybe as part of that, we'd be willing to sort of knock down, you know.
Yeah, I mean, even if they took sections, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no, in the end, it has to be all gone, because it can't be, because then you wouldn't be able to board it back up again if it's, like, one wing is gone.
No, 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 exactly, but I mean, I guess maybe it's worth a discussion, yeah.
Do you want a barn?
Well, but if it, on the other hand, maybe we need to get some, find out if there is somebody out there that would like to demolish it, salvage the entire thing. Because if you let it, if you let all the prime pieces go, now you're never going to get somebody to salvage it. And then, then.
So the history, the history is, Tim has, Tim has done a lot of outreach and posted it, right? And, and said, hey, this is, and, and nobody's, nobody has come back and said, we'll take your barn. And so this, this goes back like four years ago. So it ended up that the Greeno Barn Committee, which was, I don't even remember who all was on there, but. They, they said we should just pay to have it taken down, but it was going to be 50 or 60,000 dollars, right?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if it was that much, but I guess it depends to the level of which you do it, right? Like, if we left the concrete or the floor, right, ultimately, you know, that would be significantly less.
How about if we store the antique fire engines? I mean, how much would it be to fix it enough to store things in it?
Well, the problem isn't, the problem is that the barn itself isn't in terrible, isn't in terrible shape. And inside, it's dry. There's actually really, really cool horse stalls in there. It's, it's a really cool barn. There's plenty of room to store things. The problem is, is that they won't be safe, because it's broken into all the time. And so I think you have to assume it would be broken into. And, you know, if it was in a different location, maybe, but, you know, it's so hard to get in and around and.
Yeah, but there is access to it, actually, you can actually drive to it.
Yeah.
And, you know, no cameras and.
Yeah, we could do that, it's just.
I know, again, it's one of those.
It's a, it's a good, it's a good dry location where we could.
Talking cheap.
And then, so master planning project.
Yeah, well, we're supporting that.
And the complete streets project, these were, these were working groups to support. So those were our goals.
We got a lot of them done.
Yeah, I guess that would give us a C.
Yep.
Overall.
Well, I don't know, it's the things we did better than others, as you said.
Yeah, and I think there were certain things that just sucked.
I don't think you didn't do it all. Yeah.
All right.
All right, moving on.
Yeah, I think it's, personally, I think it's a C.
Depends whether you're.
All right, let's move on.
Fucking great.
We're better.
Do you want to finish up the administrative's report?
Sure, sure. Let's take the next one. Number five proposed, temporary change in operating hours for the summer, which we've done the past two summers here. A longer day, it's been Tuesdays, I think, the last year or two. One long day during the week and a half a day on Friday, which is historically pretty slow in the summertime around here. And we have noticed the foot traffic has, you know, improved somewhat on the longer days. I think the first year we did it, we didn't get very much at all because it was a new sort of concept. But people do come in and, and do some business on the longer day, so.
That's because they're hanging around to come to the selectmen's meeting.
That's, well, that could be, because it's on Tuesday. So she'd consider that again, any police appreciate the flexibility over the summer. And the state Fridays are pretty slow here, especially Friday afternoon is pretty slow here.
And, so these are the same hours as the previous two years?
It's the same as last year.
Oh, that's right, we just did them last year, yeah. And it would go from Memorial Day through Labor Day?
Yes.
Sounds good.
I'm fine with this as. All set.
All right, and we had a request from the Carlisle Papi Project to display the Papi's on the town common from the 19th of May through June 1st.
I thought it was been here for last year.
That won't affect Memorial Day ceremonies?
It, it won't conflict with that, no, it'd be, you know, out of the way.
Good point though, let me, I'll have to ask that, hold on one second.
Communicate that.
Raise a flag on that morning.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize Carlisle Papi Project to display Papi's on the town common between May 19th and June 1st.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
All right, and then you see the proposed meeting schedule for the summer. I know that people have vacation plans, and we don't always meet twice per month during the summer. If you know your plans for the summer, just let us know, and we can try to work around that. I think historically, we've had one meeting in August rather than two, I don't know, the past few years. Just let us know what your, what your plans are. And then, not on, not on the written report, I just wanted to mention that Luke and I, and actually Melinda, were part of the Complete Streets Working Group last week and working on a recommendation for the engineering firm that will do the design of the projects that were funded with the state grant. And the group is recommending niche engineering to do the design work. And if we don't have a contract for you, we won't, by next time, I think, have a finalized agreement for you to approve. So we want us to keep you abreast of that. I don't know if the group want to add anything to that, but it's a good proposal. But it was a pretty good consensus that niche is a full-service engineering firm, and they do a lot of work for the planning board.
Yeah, they still are reviewer.
They're still the peer reviewers.
Peer reviewer, I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're very good on the planning board.
We want to execute that contract within the next few weeks and get, get things moving, as far as that goes.
And did we need to do something about Timber Nook that was in the packet?
Was it in the packet?
Yeah, it wasn't in the year, but it was in the packet.
Oh, I forgot, I took it out. Because they came in at the last minute, and they said, well, we squeeze it in there. But since it's in there, that's a group that.
It's about the summer, so.
Yeah. Yeah, if anyone's familiar with it, it's a, an educational program for children. They're requesting use of the cornet land specifically for this educational program, which introduces, you know, children to the outdoors. I guess they've looked at all the occasions, but the cornet land, you know, although it's not conservation land, it fits their, fits their needs. So they're asking for the boys' permission to use the cornet land this summer for that.
Hello.
Is it in the letter?
Yes, five weeks of programming from nine to one or nine to four, depending on the ages of the children. Do you want the actual dates?
It's five weeks.
Okay.
Poison Ivy?
Yeah.
Chinaman arc is a good.
Ooh, thank you.
Yeah, very good.
Yeah, if we could just get more specifics about, I mean, is it every day?
Yeah, she says it here, it's nine to one or nine to four, depending on the ages of the children attending that particular.
Yeah, so, so it is, it's literally every day that week.
I think, I think it is.
And how do they, how do they get the kids here? Is there traffic, is there, you know, I mean, if we have, is there pickup, is there drop off, is, you know what I mean? I just, I don't want to create, you know, logjam here. Yeah, I think, I'm not saying.
Sure, I think, yeah.
She describes that, you know, you see that there was a description about the drop off and pickup.
Yeah, it was.
All right, yeah, I'll ask someone to come in and present to the board next time. Right, I think that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I just want to. So the, you know, one of the big things here is just, I just, Tim just said it, but please make sure we get back to him about which of the proposed dates here we can attend, bro, in the summer.
Just a quick question here, and you may have talked about this already, but the idea of some kind of a retreat for the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, we haven't talked about that yet.
Just thinking that might be something we'd want to work into the summer rather than going into the fall.
Especially if we're going to somebody's place in Rockport. I was going to say, who's place in Rockport?
By boat, ooh, by boat.
Some people will do it at by boat, yes.
That'd be fun.
I'm in by boat.
And if you don't have your boat of your own, well, use somebody else's boat.
And I have ding for non-cooperative.
So do I. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Not big enough for everybody to get on at all at the same time.
So the next, the next thing is, liaison reports, if anybody has anything. But I want to first just, there's liaison memberships here. So, Barney, these are, these are most, if not all, of the different committees that we have. Some of these, well, these are all just ones where we have a liaison, so you're not on the committee. And you don't have to go every time. You know, some of these, all we're doing is telling them who the person is so they know who to contact if there's a problem. Others, you're much more actively involved, like Luke and I were pretty actively involved in the public safety because of the fire chief's process and contracts. So it varies. And we're about ready to have a liaison report, so I'm going to guess there aren't a whole lot of them. But, so, you know, we should all just take a look through this, and, you know, it's based upon, you know, your interest. And then what we do is we just try to make sure that it's evenly distributed, that somebody doesn't have 30. And, you know, Luke, once again, only has one.
But it's the school committee.
And I, I think some of these, we should read your girl a little, because, for instance, CPA, this must be on here, right? Yeah, it's, well, it says Luke, but he's actually on the committee, so it's not a.
I'm the chair for the ninth year in a row, yay!
And then the long-term caps, they said, you know, had Carrie and Kate, but I'm actually a member of the committee. So we didn't need Carrie on there as a liaison, because I was, so I'd like to see, I don't remember who was actually members of which committees, so that we could clean this up a little bit before we start.
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully, at least if there's somebody who was a member of the committee, hopefully, they were at least one of the names on the right-hand side.
Yes, that's true, that's true.
Okay, yeah, so just.
So how do you proceed on this typically?
Just kind of give a page what you're interested in and.
Yeah, next, next meeting, we'll just go through it. And, you know, everybody say what they're interested in, and then they get divvied up and we duke it out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, should we get rid of the ones, though, that aren't, so like, the dog committee isn't a committee anymore, right?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, also, just cleaning up, doing a little housekeeping here to figure out what is really necessary in here. So if there's no more dog committee, we shouldn't have it on there.
Yeah, I think that might be the only one that's no longer here, though. I mean, CCTV, CCTV is no longer here, but.
Right, Housing Authority.
Yes, Housing Authority, well, yes. So, when you have police department, that's not a committee.
No, but liaison to the police department.
That's a liaison to the police, okay, so it's like, okay.
It's the same thing as.
Technology is not a committee, it's a working group.
Yep.
So I, I guess I would also like to have some indication of what is a committee, what's a working group, and what's a department? I think that would be helpful as well.
Yeah.
I mean, because town clerk, you know.
Right, yeah, so CPA is an actual committee, right?
And dog committee is gone, yes.
Energy Task Force, so, so do we actually want somebody on that?
I think we do. I, I think we want somebody actually as a member, not just a liaison.
Okay.
So, I think it's going to be increasingly important for us to be involved in these things.
Yeah, so for that, we'll have to take a look at the charge and, you know, what the makeup is.
So actually, one year, Jen, you had all the charges, you had really nice, done a nice job with all the charges of everything. Could we get an electronic copy of that or something? It was probably on, on the website, but I kind of don't feel like I know where it is in one spot. I'd like to have a copy of it next, but it's not here, so that.
So long-term caps, that's another one we want somebody on, right?
I'm on it.
Right, so, but we want.
I don't know, we remember how long my, my, I think I'm on it for one more year. See, that's the other reason why it would be nice to add those things.
Yeah, then the deer committee, right, that's another one.
Yes, and that was, yeah.
Right, well, I think the other thing that we'll be doing is the appointments to committees. Maybe we could have, maybe we could at least just get next time what all the committees are and who's currently on them. And I know you guys have that readily available as to when, when the expirations are and.
Yeah, apparently, the website's not up to date, though.
Maybe it wasn't since the elections, maybe?
No, no, it was, I think it was the municipal facility, somebody looked themselves up, and they found out, you know, it's, it wasn't correct in there, so.
And are you saying that if some, if a member of the Board of Selectmen is actually a member of the committee, you don't need an additional liaison?
That's right, they are the liaison.
So typically, so typically, there's only, you know, we look to only have one name on here.
Right.
But sometimes there's two names because it's a big committee, or because there were two people that felt strongly they wanted to be involved in.
Yeah, and I guess what we should also start starring are, which, so we've, we've wanted somebody like that thought from this, from this selectmen to be on the long-term caps, so we've always had one.
Yeah, 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 that's what I'm saying.
So, and which ones, so it would be nice if we could also indicate those on this, so we know which ones we. So which ones, so it would be nice if we could also indicate those on this so we know which ones we, we've, and maybe there's ones that we're not on yet that we really would like to be on rather than just.
Yeah, I think so. Next time, we could look at this and we could look at the committees, the committee membership now.
Yeah.
So, but, but we can't just, you know, suddenly, we're going to put a Board of Selectmen in it. We'll have to change the, the membership of the committee.
We may or may not, but we'll see. We can, for instance, if nobody wanted, well, we can't be on the FINCOM, but.
Right, but if there's five people on it, they all want to be on it, it'd be tough for us to say.
But let's say for some reason, they just couldn't find anybody to be on the Agriculture Commission and somebody here, you know, was willing to become a member, then they could become, they could be appointed as a mem, as a member.
Right. Well, that's what happened with Municipal Facilities Committee the first time around. It was, we couldn't get anybody, so I went on it. It also allowed me to convince Bill to get on it. So I don't think we have a special spot on it. Okay.
Yeah, and how did I end up with it?
Because you took over as the, you took over as the liaison and there wasn't anybody else speaking up. You replaced Bill.
Okay.
You volunteered for that one. It wasn't because you were on the Board of Selectmen.
So the other, there are a couple of other things, though. Complete Streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I still have to draft those charters, but, or that charter. And then the other thing is, and Barney, you sent an email with respect to this, but the master plan. You know, I mean, I definitely think Carrie should stay involved, I mean, without a doubt.
Yeah.
But I still think we need a BOs liaison because unless Carrie wants to come to every meeting and report.
Well, and it's not only that, but it's not, I don't believe it's our appointment to that committee, is it? Isn't it the planning board that appoints that committee?
Yes, not our committee.
So we don't appoint.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not our committee.
But they don't have a BOs, I wonder?
They may have.
I think, I think we should have one, geez.
Yeah.
I believe Carrie is on the committee.
He is, he is.
It is our.
He too.
Yeah.
But I don't think it was by charter necessarily. And, you know, so anyway, we, we have to talk to the planning board about that.
So for next time, and, you know, I'm not going to be the chair, but for next time, we can have also the charters.
I can be the chair.
Okay, just ask.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I've been looking for.
So I'm not sure where this really fits in because I'm not sure that it's entirely an overlap, but lots of discussion around the transfer station. You know, we have household recycling, but I think this is a bigger thing on the transfer station. So I'm wondering if we should put together a short-term committee just to evaluate what we should do there? Or what? I mean, there were some direct actions that I think are easy.
Yes.
For us.
Well, there's, there's some specific.
Eerie stuff that we should do. And so how, you know, how would we go about doing that?
Yeah, well, I think one thing that was clear at the last meeting is the recycling committee is doing one thing and Gary's doing the same thing and they're doing it in.
In silos.
Yeah, either parallel or diverging, but not converging tracks.
Right.
You know, we don't want.
Right, he's already talking to compost people.
Right.
Right, and they didn't, I don't think the household knew that.
No, they didn't realize.
And they had money that they wanted to spend.
Right.
So I think, I don't know, is that a working group? On the, on the other hand, if it's a committee, I would also have representation from the Municipal Facilities Committee on that because they also are evaluating the site, you know, for various things.
Right, well, again, maybe we revise the recycling, household recycling charge.
Well, maybe it shouldn't be called that.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, that's probably quite dated.
Yes.
So we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
While we see the charts for that.
While we see the charts, yeah.
But we're just, I'm just going to write down transfer stations so we don't forget it. All right.
And did you want to put Communications Tower project on?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So I guess, looking at this again.
Though I think that probably should be whoever's on.
Communication Center kind of encompasses that as well.
Yeah, it is, it's their infrastructure.
I guess I'd like to see this be reorganized just a little bit by, you know, subheadings. So committees, committee.
I did this. I'll send.
Oh, so you're, it's your fault. Okay, would you send me an?
Yes, this is my phone.
No, it's just that way because it's, it's neither alphabetical, nor is it by, you know, like function or anything.
It's alphabetical until we add it.
It's a train of thought. Get to the dog committee.
It's alphabetical until you get to the new ones. So I will, I can send this to you.
That would be great.
Do what you would like with it. Okay. Are there any liaison? Dying to get to number eight.
I think I already gave my liaison report about the Municipal Facilities Committee. Trying to look ahead to the next.
I'm not even going to take them out of my binder. We are not going to do minutes this time.
Oh, good, yeah. Well, I will take them out of my binder so I can take them home and read them.
Okay. Any other liaison reports?
Nope.
And Barry Bongis still going on.
Well, we had a town meeting. That's my liaison.
Yeah, okay.
What's up?
It was forever.
I think it's still going on.
It's still going on.
Very cute, that's all for the night.
All right. Reorganization of the board. What happened to it? It's here. So again, as I said at the beginning, this is typically done at the beginning of the meeting, but we wanted to absolutely make sure that Barney had a, had a chance to participate in this. There, there is no set rule on how we do this, you know, but I would say that kind of the past trends are that, you know, whoever is the vice chair often becomes the chair. Whoever is the clerk often becomes the vice chair, unless there's a whole bunch of new people. And we don't normally have a new person immediately become a chair or a vice chair. It's normally at least a year before that happens.
I did.
In fact, not the first year.
Yeah, vice chair.
Oh, vice chair.
Yep.
Yeah, it's because we don't like you.
No.
And so that's, that's the typical flow, the vice chair to chair and then chair to just a regular member.
People are meritorious. I didn't go that way.
But that is just kind of a general rule. I mean, it's, it's very flexible just to make sure that, you know, people are comfortable. You know, like I think Carrie was very, very strong, I think, as a remote person, but there was no way he was going to be able to be the chair because then for, you know, many months out of the year, whoever was vice chair was going to have to be the chair. And that just wouldn't work out very well.
By the way, I just haven't reread the policy handbook. We actually have a policy that chairs should not, unless in extreme circumstances, that the chairs should not be more than one year at a time. And I think we need to remind other boards and committees.
That's from the mental health committee.
Actually, that's not new. The Board of Selectmen has reminded, I think, every other year that I've been on here that the problem is just, so I'm not aware of us, except for John Gorecki was chair two years in a row. But I'm not aware of other times that that has happened.
And Tim Hope was once, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, sometimes there are circumstances where it just made sense and we were all very appreciative that John would take it on two years in a row. It was his last year.
I made that other bar, I'm still grumbling.
And.
Then there's a CPA charter.
You don't distract at all.
You should just be able to ignore me. Everybody else seems to. You haven't learned over the years?
Anyway, but it is a policy.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that there's just, there's just, yes. And we do, you know, and we can, again, remind all the committees that we really want them to try to, to rotate it around. It's just, some committees, it's just.
Yeah, I mean.
They just don't want to, they don't want to do that. Like CPC.
Yeah, I cried once. Ed was chair for, I think, almost a full year, season, it's not even a full year thing, and then, and then he quit.
Okay.
It's my fault.
I move to nominate the Honorable Kath Reed as chair for this coming year of Board of Selectmen.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
I wouldn't say honorable, but.
I'll speak to you later.
Be eminence.
There we go, there we go.
And this problem that sits to my left, I will be very happy to hand over to you.
Did you say elderly?
No, I didn't.
Oh, I thought, I thought I heard.
I don't consider anybody younger than me as being elderly.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. I promise not to fall off the mini ladders this summer.
Okay, did, did everybody say aye? I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Okay, where's my?
Yeah.
So we need to nominate a vice chair.
I move to nominate Alan Lewis as vice chair of the Board of Selectmen. I'm not going to, no honorable, no, nothing.
Now you can use elderly appropriately.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor and one abstention. And we have one more office to fill, is clerk. Maybe we have that. Call for a clerk.
What was the role of the clerk?
So the clerk is somebody who is able to come in, correct me if I'm wrong, come in and sign things if, if needed.
Sign notes.
Yes, and just, you know, I think it's primarily that. It's typically somebody who can get here pretty quickly.
Right.
Mine, I get it because I can walk here. Okay, I got it.
But I do want to ask you quite one question. Have you ever done anything as clerk? Have you been requested? Because I was clerk, I was never asked to do anything, ever.
I've signed a couple of things, yes.
You did? Oh, okay. Maybe they just didn't like.
I'm not sure because I was clerk. I just didn't do anyone around.
You were the only one around, yeah. And I think the same for me. I was clerk my first year and I don't call.
Yeah, I didn't realize there were duties.
Yeah.
I just liked the title. Put it on your LinkedIn page.
Exactly, NSCB.
There you go. So do we have a nomination?
I don't think it makes sense for me to be a clerk because I work in.
I would nominate Barbara Barney Arnold as clerk.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Third.
You accept the nomination?